Thanks, everyone. Call meeting to order of Monday, April 12th. Is there any additions to the agenda or deletions? I have one that I have marked here. It's for certification of compliance for the road, right, Cash?
Yes.
So we put that under highway. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make that a motion to add that to under highway.
Second.
Rick, we're Rick on that one.
That's good.
Is there any other additions or deletions?
Um, I believe the last email I saw is that um, the rec committee wanted to have a discussion on the parking lot before we did, and then kick it back to us. I know Matt's here tonight, so if that's the case.
We can have a discussion.
You want to do that tonight, or? Because I know your last request.
We'll just make sure we point all the select board members of the rec committee will be all set.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
It's at the very end of the meeting.
Yeah, we can discuss it a little bit.
Okay.
As long as they get my way, I'll be all set.
Okay, guess we'll leave it alone then.
Tell me your way.
I guess so. I was gonna get it off the agenda, because he said he wanted it, so.
I'm up for an argument tonight, right?
Sure. Moving right along, I'd ask for approval of the minutes of March 22nd.
Did we ever call for a vote on that motion?
I didn't hear it.
No.
Oh, I didn't. I got carried away with the rec.
Excited.
All right, on the addition to the agenda, is there uh, was a motion made, was seconded, all in favor of a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Sorry about that. Thanks, you guys.
I'll be so bold as to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of March 22nd as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any corrections or deletions?
They look good to me.
Any changes, anything? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Highway, Road Commissioner report. Uh, before he give you a report, do you want to deal with that certificate of compliance?
Yes.
Do you want to briefly explain it?
That, um, we just have to verify that we have a highway network inventory and that we adopted the June 2019 road and bridge standards, which we have, and we need that form for paving grant application, which is due Thursday, so.
Yes, right here.
Need five signatures or one?
Yes, we need all five, or a majority of the board, anyway. Is there any further explanation? I'd ask for a motion to sign this, and we all have to sign it.
So moved.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. Cash, do you have anything else under highway?
For um, just to give an update, we um, learned that there might be more revenue from the federal on paving grants and stuff like that, so we actually today um, got a estimate from one of the paving companies to fill out, in order to fill out the grant. And hold it. That way if it's accepted, we'll be ready to go on a different section of the road. We already are, if we get the grant from last year that we didn't get, we get it this year, we're gonna do the Walker Mountain Road from Creek Road to East Hemuth Road, but also if there's extra funds for grants available, we're gonna be ready to go. We're cementing a grant for, from McCormick's Machine Shop by Schoolhouse Road, at that new bridge, just past the old Wyler Bridge, headed towards 133.
The corner bridge.
Yes. So just out as paperwork and.
See if we get it.
See if we get it. Like that. Um, we've been capping the, with stone, or capping the stone with a shirt pack and stuff, and filling in. We've been grading. The roads now softened up enough. And also I have a driveway permit application, if Mike wants to present that. This driveway application is at just before Route 133 on Walker Mountain Road, almost to Donner Lane. He actually wants to be able to get into his pasture field. And actually, it requires an 18-inch culvert at ditch, a denisite visit, and that's what I had figured out.
And you have, you don't see any issues?
No. Actually, that ditch stays pretty dry.
Okay, good.
You don't see a lot of flow of water, hardly at all through there.
And um, all we need is the select board chair to sign this, so if anybody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion with the select board chair, approve the uh, access permit for Joshua Towler on Walker Mountain Road.
Okay.
And it's seconded by Rick. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, anything else, Rick, or?
Nope.
Cash?
That's all I have.
All right, um, moving down to uh, well, select board warrants are floating and drifting, so if anybody wants to check that out. We have a guest, Alex.
He's not here yet.
Not here.
Ah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we skip over the guest portion and jump on, in order, down to public comments.
Is there?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there any public comments? Moving down to old business. Sign the letter to Cindy Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was an excellent letter. Thank you to Katie for putting that together, and I'll make a motion that the board sign that. The whole board.
Yeah, we'll sign it.
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion?
Do you want it read for the record?
Yeah, go ahead.
Letter to Cindy Davis. Dear Cindy, the select board extends their heartfelt thanks for the many years of service that you contributed to the cemetery committee. The Clarendon community has been blessed with your commitment to serve, and it has not gone unnoticed. Your presence and depth of knowledge will be especially missed. We are sure the families of Clarendon who have laid their loved ones to rest are grateful for the effort that you put forth to honor those who have gone before us. We offer our most sincere thanks for all that you have done to upkeep the town cemeteries. We hope this letter finds you happy and healthy. Sincerely, the Clarendon Select Board.
All right, there's been a motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Go for it.
And next on the old business is open bids for the Morton property. I just checked with Katie. We only have one bid. Am I correct? So I'll open that now. I'll read. This is brief. Please consider this letter a formal offer for the property listed as a Daniel Morton and Marilyn on Walker Mountain Road. Uh, the Casella Group hereby formally offers the Town of Clarendon $5,202 uh, for the property being auctioned.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Casella.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Is there any further discussion? How long did we have the, uh, put this out to the public, Katie? Pardon?
30 days.
So this is the only bid we've gotten in 30 days.
There was a lot of interest, but I think when people heard that it was just a piece of property and no water, no sewer, no house, the interest went away.
No deed for however long.
All right, any other questions or concerns? Are you hearing none? All those in favor of the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So be it.
Do we need a description on that, or anything, or?
All right, we have office appointments for RAS, Rec Committee and Cemetery Committee. Regional Ambulance Service uh, is.
Kevin Dougherty.
Yeah. And his term would go to 2323.
It's a three-year term, and it was taken in 2020, so he's picking up that term.
All right, is there a motion to appoint?
I, quite frankly, I'd like to do a package deal. I'm just making a motion that we appoint all five individuals to their respective committees.
All right, so let me read those off then. If the motion is seconded. All right, for Regional Ambulance would be Kevin Dougherty. For Recreation Committee would be Michael, how do you see his last name?
Robalotto.
Okay. And Heather Robalotto. Cemetery Committee would be Kevin Peck and Bob Underhill.
Does he have a letter of interest in it, what's there?
Pardon?
The rec committee was required to have their members get a letter of interest in order to get on the rec committee. Do the other people have a letter of interest?
Um.
I don't.
Pardon?
I don't have a letter of interest. I, I have interest by talking to Katie and Heidi, and one of the things I've asked them to do is have Cindy get in touch with me. I would just want to hear Cindy's take on the job, being appointed, and she never did, and so.
I gave Katie a letter this morning.
All of those letters are in that packet that I received.
So Kevin, would you be willing to just scratch something down for us, even on a piece of paper, to submit as a, just as interest?
Well, my, my willingness to write that letter was based upon talking to somebody, see what the, you know, ask Mike. Unless I know what the job is, I really don't.
Okay.
You know, I wanted to get an idea of what entails.
So I will alter my motion to exclude Mr. Peck until which time is he's comfortable, but being that the rest of them are there, I'll go ahead and move on.
Before we go to that, Heidi, you're on the Cemetery Committee. Would you like to?
Okay, so I have actually, Mr. Peck and I have already had this conversation, and his information has been passed on to Cindy Davis for her to reach out to him, and I mean, I can't make her do that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think what he's looking for is direction from you folks as to what you expect of us as a committee.
All right, would you like to give a brief?
I've already had that conversation, but I think he wants to come from you.
For the public, would you?
Basically, it's going to the cemeteries um, on a regular basis, looking and seeing what work needs to be done, and if there's any projects that need to be done, putting those recommendations forth to you. Um, if, if that means, uh, if there's interest, personal interest in coordinating an effort to get some projects done, absolutely can do that as well, um, but that is my understanding of what my position is on this committee.
That's accurate.
Mm-hmm. All right, so now Kevin, did you, I'm sure you appreciate that brief.
Well, yeah, and we've had, we've had a discussion, and like I said, I just wanted to get an idea, you know, to what degree, I mean, that's a nice, but what that actually entailed when, actual boots on the ground, but what that entailed, so. But you know, other than saying, what the heck, throw my name in and I'll give Katie a loan.
It's a, it's a piece of cake.
Yeah. Well, no, I enjoy, I mean, I've been doing, I've been doing stuff for about two years now, and, and as, as Gloria and Heidi and Katie would acknowledge, I mean, I just spent last week repairing five stones and next door, so.
Yeah, it's on Facebook. It's good.
You want to uh, so I'll leave it as my original motion. I'll add, just provided a letter can be submitted to Katie before tonight's out.
All right, so. And Rick, you seconded that, did you still?
Go along with that?
I'm still going with it.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
All right.
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, and so we will look for a letter here to make it official. And the rest of these will have to sign stuff. All right. Uh, under new business, approve Peck burial.
A different, a different family.
Do you want to speak to that?
You want me to, or?
Yes, because you've received the paperwork.
Yeah, so Mr. Peck here, his parents have passed away, and they would like to bury them in the Chip and Hook Cemetery, and they do have a family plot, and he's provided where it is and the measurements. And I believe paperwork will be coming through Clifford's, you said?
I imagine so.
When they do the burial.
My sister let me take care of it myself, but.
Mr. Chairman, I first would like to extend our sympathies to the Peck family and approve the burial in the Chip and Hook Cemetery.
There's a second?
Seconded.
Uh, I think from the whole board, you know, sympathies go out to the family. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And approve and sign Underhill's Ball Field Hold Harmless Agreement.
Is that the whole board or just a representative?
Just the chair.
Being that we've done this many years now, I will go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the Hold Harmless Agreement regarding the Chip and Hook Little League Field, authorizing the chairman to sign it, and entering into the agreement with the Underhills.
There's a second. Okay, I seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bob, we appreciate, I know the kids appreciate families and stuff, so. All right, Bob, you want us to talk about a cemetery project proposal?
Uh, yeah, Vermont Old Cemetery Association approached me about a week ago, a little more than a week ago, about doing a project in cemetery next door. Uh, they've done work in the old cemeteries all over the state for quite a while, and recently, I guess their work they were doing with, uh, you know, Pecks here, the stones that had just been uh, repaired, uh, took an interest in this cemetery and approached the Historic Society about partnering with uh, them to do the project. Uh, they're providing the expertise. We'll gather up a bunch of volunteers, uh, you know, get supplies, lots that, you know, needed for it, and we'll have a day of cleaning stones, getting some of them that are leaning, standing up again, and some other things, basic maintenance and repair. And being a town-owned cemetery to make sure that it's okay with the select board.
I don't have an issue with it.
Do, are things going to need to be purchased out of the cemetery fund? Do we need to authorize that, or do you not know yet?
If there are funds available, yeah.
Well, I mean, we have our cemetery maintenance fund, so if, if there's items that need to be purchased, I know, I believe there was epoxy purchased years ago that was never used, so.
Yeah, we got the epoxy, and I verified that's the right stuff. I need to take a run-up to Barry, I guess, and pick up the correct kind of cleaner, and I need to get some sure pack bought for, you know, getting, securing stones, uh, when they get rewritten.
Do we have sure pack on site?
We don't have any on site, but we can actually put a little pile up if he wants to use it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, they said they, you know, wanted to have a couple yards of sure pack.
So it's basically just a little truck.
And otherwise, it's just, you know, plastic buckets and brushes, so, you know. Uh, seeing we've got the epoxy and if we can get the sure pack, you know, the rest of it, I think the cleaner is probably the only expensive, you know, item in there.
What do we have in maintenance?
So we're, we're currently still waiting on you folks authorize some work to be done in the fall, some excess work to be done in the fall outside of the normal mowing contract um, for our Chip and Hook Cemetery. That work was started in the fall, but was never finished, and they never billed us for it, so we're still waiting for that. Um, I do know that we have at least $1,000 um, for any additional maintenance. I, I just don't feel comfortable throwing out a figure not knowing what they're gonna bill us for um, for the rest of it.
Can we make a, you know, contact with those folks to ask them, remind them?
Yep, Katie and I have actually talked about that.
Okay, good.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to authorize Bob Underhill and crew to uh, make plans with VOCA to have their project workday, and I would like to also authorize the treasurer to pay any expenses um, involved with that workday up to $500.
There's a second for discussion.
Seconded.
The product he's talking about is called D2. It's $41 a gallon. It comes out of Berry, and you have, I just had two, two gallons shipped to my house, arrived last week. One of the things that, Tom Giffen, you know Tom, is the president of Vermont Cemetery Association, is uh, we'd like to probably try to arrange uh, possibly with a piece of equipment, Cash. An excavator. We know the town's got a little small one, because right here in this corner, the two stones that have the uh,
Spires, yeah.
Spires, you know, we need something to just cut the straps, pick them up, you know, after it's epoxy, put them, set them down in place. I mean, that could be something to do during the work week, so Cash doesn't have to come in on a Saturday or something. I could be here or something. We could work that out, but that's kind of some of the stuff that Tom would like to do here. Tom and I went to high school together and worked together for 40 years, and you know, that's, you know, that's one of the things that probably, he walked, he, once he got, you know, once we were working here and Bob came, and they were all walking around, I know this particular corner was of interest to Tom, getting those two spires up, and this is the white gate. You can get the, lift that wide gate, you can get the, you know, it'll take, he says, 20 minutes work to have them both up and done.
Do they have to be pinned, drilled and pinned or anything, or just?
He uses, you know, there's some of them out there have pins in them, as Bob saw last week. Uh, those don't. I don't believe those do. But he has an epoxy like Bob was talking about to put it in and put it on and.
Well, my question is, would it be worth it to pin them, to hold them up longer or anything like that, or?
That's something you have to talk to him, and I mean, you know.
Well, first, I would say um, you could stand down on this one, but the, the three of us, are we gonna okay if they can work out a time period?
Absolutely.
I mean, you're talking 20 minutes. I, I, yeah.
I just want officially to give permission to the Road Commissioner.
It's only a matter of a little bit of transfer to the highway budget.
We'll negotiate later.
After dark and bring you a gun.
You know, this kind of effort with, you know, Tom Giffen's expertise and, you know, volunteers.
This is awesome.
You know, doing the work is, you know, the best deal you're ever going to find. I've been involved with the cemetery that being professionally redone, and, you know, the costs are astronomical. You know, bringing, you know, professional crews and, you know, so we're really fortunate that VOCA is here and, you know, has an interest in what we're doing.
I think that um, you know, the board, we don't have any issue with you guys getting together and, and planning something out.
One of the things Tom wanted to mention, he did express was, and I don't know how to go about this, and I don't know how to read it, but apparently he's been in enough cemeteries over the course of, I mean, the life, his lifetime, to sit there and say, he says, number one problem is, is mowing. And, and it got kind of an interest in because my, well, my grandfather was, I got two sets over here, was buried in 1862, but in 2010, I'll find the graves, a stone standing. You know, someone put a picture up on Find the Graves, and it struck me, it's just, you know, in that timeframe, it, you know, it fell over, and, you know. So it wasn't like it was down for a long, long time.
I just think it's great that you guys are taking interest in that, and, because those have been laying on the ground for how long, those spears? Those spears?
Years.
You gotta call for it.
It's great.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor um, with regard to, you know, all this stuff with the graveyard. Is there any further comments or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, guys, nice work.
And I would say, Bob, if that budget's not enough, come back and visit us.
My guess is it's more than enough, when you already got the epoxy and you have a source for some sure pack.
Sure. But if not, come back and see us, yep.
I suspect it's more than enough, and that we wouldn't be spending all that.
We figured it would at least get you started.
Is that something within a couple weeks you're gonna be doing, or what's your thoughts of? Would you like the sure pack sooner than later, like tomorrow or something, or?
Oh, no.
What's your plan?
Tom Giffen was talking about, you know, sometime in May.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I wanted to first come here, and then, you know.
I mean, if you had some down here, I'd be fine, anytime, because, you know, the work I did, I did, I did five family ones over there. I had, you know, I used a bucket and a half, a pail and a half of sure packets. For the most part, you just, it's the base. You want to level the base and stuff some underneath there and, and.
What I might do is put a pile out there on the edge there, and then whatever you don't use, I can back drag into the peck lot.
Do that, yeah.
You had a twofer.
Yep.
All right, uh, moving right along. Um, Goochberg Farms Liquor License.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Goochberg Farms Liquor License.
We all have to sign.
Seconded.
Any discussion around it? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed. Okay. Rep Field Parking Area, discussion. Yeah, first of all, I just want to, having that gate on that back uh, field is a good idea. I mean, I've brought people in there myself.
If you want to oppose the parking, if you want to do part of parking, but I, we gotta have that gate closed that af- after this whoever uses the field down below, the gate should be shut and locked again.
Yep.
I'm okay with it. If you want to do a parking area down there, that's fine, but when it's, when it's not in use, to keep, keep it from being needle park or sex park down there.
Yeah.
Close the gate, lock it after use.
Well, I think that, don't we have a combination lock? I know there's.
There's a combination lock down there, yep.
Um, is that the same one that was, uh, I passed. Is that the same one that was on the meter can?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Put our own meter block on it and stuff, and.
Okay.
The guy who mows a lot and stuff, he's got the combination, mostly. I have the combination and.
Now, that, that parking, what my thought was, I would wonder if we could ask Cash to do two things. One, uh, it looks like that lower parking lot is kind of grown over a little bit. So I think that we should bring some. I think that we should bring some material in there and resurface that, so that it's, you know, people know where the parking lot is. And the next thing is, is if we could contact the different communities around, up to and including the state over by the airport, and find out if we could get any, uh, old guardrails, or at least the posts for the guardrails, and set that around that parking area, so people, when that is open, or if it's left open for just one reason or another, can't drive out onto the fields, and to the fields. Can you inquire at all about that?
About posts, old guardrail posts, or some sort?
Yeah, because, uh, I know that the state down on Route seven B down below, they used to stack a lot of their steel down there.
Right, your town's steel post or wooden post?
Whatever.
Okay.
And see what we can do, and, and then, if that's the case, you know, we could put them in the ground four foot apart or something, just so that people can't drive onto the fields and ruin the fields. Go ahead.
I believe Blanchard's, the old metal works on seven B, out back, they brought in, when they did the highway.
Yeah.
They pulled all the tube, uh, the pressure treated four-by-sixes out of ground, used to have the posts.
Yep.
And they sold them for like two bucks a piece, and there's this pile of them, you know, all piled up neatly at Blanchard's out back there. And I've inquired about buying them in the past, just haven't got to my project, but, I mean, they may be available fairly.
Could you check on that? Could you mind?
Sure, yeah.
And get back to, follow anybody here in the town hall?
Yeah, get back to Katie on it.
See, this is why, I think this is why I should keep my mouth.
See? You're doing good.
You want to go to the rec committee too?
Marines.
Very on, Marines.
Now, I know when I, you guys say that I have to go to the cemetery.
I can see possibly if we can get some material for the, for the driveway from Cassella's, maybe, and might know a contact there to.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if they.
They have a pit in Clarendon, right?
Because if they would donate a couple loads or something, then it's just spreading it out.
So the town could spread it out for us.
But let's be proactive on this, let's, let's, now, I understand, you know, you want to get your crew together and have a discussion and stuff, but I, I asked for tonight to start the discussion here, and, you know, already it looks like we have some past and victory.
I'm not disagreeing with some of it, I just think that we, you know, you've got to have those gates shut at night.
I think, I think that.
I picked out several people down below there.
I think that your stance on whoever, I guess the que- then the question becomes, which you guys have to figure out ultimately, it's not us, but figure out who's going to be responsible for if there's a game, or if there's practice, or whatever, who's responsible to close them, that's all.
Right, the person who uses the field.
Yeah. Because they've got to be responsible, because I.
Gate code, that's fine, you know, we can always change the gate code.
Absolutely, and I, I don't disagree at all, I think that just, you and I have had a couple discussions about what you've discovered down there, there's no reason for them to be open after hours, so.
So I think that we have a general idea of where we want to go with this.
I'll put a bug in the sheriff's ear about checking that periodically when you're.
Because either the town field they use for stuff, Mike's got, I checked out the town field, I'm sure, Underhill's fills the area, probably, they probably park there too sometimes, but, you know, but, at least they're not driving in the field, though, that's good.
No, they can't drive in.
They can watch a car over it, but that's about it, so.
Looks like the Great Wall of China around that field.
Just the horses.
Yeah. Every once in a while, I see some sheep out there, too, they get out of his.
Oh, the sheep are fine. We've only had a problem with horses.
A car on the roof, a couple of them, yeah.
Do you want to, is there anything else you want to talk about, Matt, relative to those rec fields?
No, no, we got one mowing bin, and it looks like, so we'll be opening it up pretty quick here, and issuing that, it looks like the same person last year will be mowing it, so.
Um.
If we have to, stay the deadline, so.
So it looks like, you know, we have a, gathering some information, gathering some material, and let's go for it, let's get it fixed before people start using it.
Sure.
I appreciate the effort that you guys want to put into that, and.
I know the Little League people have expressed interest in fixing up the dugouts and stuff, getting those dugout fixes and stuff, so.
Good.
Uh, Mike is in charge of Little League in Rutland County, so we just had volunteers, it's not a big deal, he can get as much of volunteers as he can, and, and so he should be able to do some work down there if we got volunteers to do the work, so.
Good, very good.
I think there was a nice group of volunteers last Saturday.
Yeah, it looked like, yeah, I'd go by, it looked like there was twenty or so people out there working, I saw you, I saw you working out there, Bob, so.
Yeah. That wasn't part of the plan, but somehow it happened.
And we haven't seen Alex come in yet, have we?
No, I can briefly tell you what he wants.
Okay.
He's looking to put a softball league down there, um, there's a group of guys that do not like using the wooden bats, like we have down here, and most of Rutland County is all wooden bats, softball, and so, you know, they want, they like to hit them.
Long.
Metal bats, and, you know, the ball goes out of sight, that type of stuff. So, he wants to put a league there, he says he's, he's all set as far as, he thinks he is, getting insurance for the league, entire league, so that would be covered, um, and there's a few things that he and I would have to chat about, as far as no drinking on the field, that type of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think, uh, the umpiring situation will be covered by the Rutland area, uh, umpires association, so it'll be, it'll be good.
Yeah, I have no problem, it's fine with me, whatever you want to do.
That's what we got it for.
He's got insurance, he's, he's good to go for the most part, and let, let, get the field to use, and make sure they balance between the Little League and the softball players, and.
Right.
Uh, and the mowing guy knows what, what, when, when everything's happening, so he can avoid that situation, so, uh, yeah.
So we're going to leave that up to you guys?
I'll contact him when I.
Yeah, I would say it's got to go through the rec committee and finalize the details, and.
Is this a private, or some kind of a?
It's the county league, isn't it?
It's, uh, whoever, whoever wants to play, with, uh, the recreation in Rutland is, is.
I mean, they're not sponsored like the Lions or the.
Oh, no, 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 this is, they get their own sponsorships, uh, they may, uh, have some, um, some entity that would sponsor them, they'd wear their shirts or whatever, but, um, yeah, a good bunch of guys for the most part.
All right, well, when you guys have something further to report to us, here, the floor will work with yous.
Yeah, I've known Alex for a long time.
All right, um, any other discussion on rec field? All right, Heidi, do you have a report for us tonight?
I do.
Ooh, why not? Katie? Katie, do you have a report?
Um, we're just continuing to work on the hazard mitigation plan, we have another planning meeting this week, but it's going pretty well.
All right, Cash, do you have any concerns?
Only thing I want to reach out, um, with Bob Bixby, hopefully we're safe, healthy recovery.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up myself, and, uh, anything else? All right, just had a long conversation with Bob on the telephone, and, uh, he had a health issue that, uh, I guess it's one of these as you get older kind of things, and he's dealing with that, so he appreciates all our concerns. I did mention that folks here in the office were very concerned when they heard the report of, uh, the issue, so, anyway, we wish Bob good health. He said he's going to miss this meeting, and maybe the next meeting, he's not sure. If he can run around the block, he said, then it'll be down.
Mm-hmm.
So.
All right, I know there were two other town officers here, so I'm not sure if there was any other reports.
Uh, do you have anything that you would like to?
Kelly, um, I will be, now that we've accepted the bid, I'll be reaching out to Bill Boomer, to see what our next steps are, and contact Cassella to, and all the things.
All right, are you satisfied with that bid?
I mean, it covers most of the, it doesn't cover interest for, um, county, but it's better than nothing.
Oh, that's right.
Um, and it gets somebody who's going to be paying it, going forward.
Gets it back on the rolls.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other, I was contacted this week by Ritter, Ritter Holdings, they want to come in and see how much they owe, and they sit down and talk about what they can do. I'm going to suggest that they talk to the board of, um, city board, the county board, to see what, to tell them what they need, but it's the most contact I've had with them in a while, so.
They have a pretty good bill out there, right?
They do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We'd love to hear from Gloria, relative to a hearing, so.
Contact me, we'll set one up.
Anything else, Kelly?
I don't know.
Gloria, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Well, we're getting a new phone system Wednesday.
Calm down.
People that call in, um, they could call in our numbers, and they'll go to the central system, and that one through town clerk, and two for treasurer, whatever.
Um.
We've developed a special phone, no calls, they call one.
I don't.
Uh.
No more rotary dial.
Oh, darn.
So, so, just to let everybody know, too, and people who watch, uh, Peg TV, and Gloria, please correct me if I'm wrong, so, when you call the town hall, if you're looking for Katie, um, after Wednesday, you're going to have to call the town clerks with the actual town hall phone number, because our numbers are not, the, the separate numbers for like the listers, myself, um, Kelly, who shared a line with a different phone number from the town clerk, uh, and Katie had a different line, those are no longer going to be, um, active, if you will, it's just going to be the town clerk's phone number with different extensions for each of us.
Yep.
And that'll be on a menu.
So one central, one central number going forward?
Yep.
Dial one if you want.
Wednesday.
Heidi, dial two if you want Katie, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Is that going to be a three-digit or one-digit?
Mm-hmm.
Is the extension going to be like a one-digit or three-digit?
Yes, one. Town clerk, one, treasurer, two.
Perfect.
It'll go to, it'll go like two oh one, or whatever, but you just hit one.
And, um, just a big thank you to Gloria for coordinating that whole effort, um, it's been a long time coming, and we are so excited here in the office for that, finally be moving up in the world.
We can tell.
Yeah.
Gloria, would you like to, uh, speak to the election that's coming up, just so that people tuning in can get the hours?
We have a special election that the select board set up, uh, May eighteenth, will be open from ten to seven like normal, they can request an absentee ballot anytime, um, once I get the ballots in, I'll be filling them out, and it'll be open ten to seven if you come in, just like a regular election. It's for a school board seat, one school board seat, just two people running.
And that's to fill the seat that was, uh, George, right? And then after that, that person, or any person, then can run.
In March.
In March.
Okay.
All right, uh, if nobody has anything else they'd like to say?
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Don't answer, good job.
Good night.